So what did he say? He said that you know, all these rich companies, they want to make money for themselves. They care about their brand and their profits. Here is a company, yes, that cares about your profits, about your business. If anybody in my state does not buy a Tata truck and buys another truck, his legs will be broken. So he said, you people, do you understand who's good for you? This sort of company is good for you, though it's a private company. This sort of company is good for you.
Why and how the Tatas were different from other businesses?
So I said, I want to serve the country instead of saying the government. So they smiled and said, but Myra, we Tatas always I felt that we have been serving the country. And we want to continue serving the country. He promptly said, I want this guy and but he said to me, he said, I am going to make you do some real work. There you're sitting in the office with G R D, it's very prestigious. Parantu, it's just papers and stuff. So Sumant Mulgaonka said, look, we've learnt how to make a truck, make a truck to the world's best German standards. And what the heck, why should the world not know that they are our trucks? We want to put the Tata symbol when we export them like we were doing in India. So any change we made, Sumant Mulgaonka would say, you know, you got your technical evaluation and your views. What does the Sadhguru think of things? We want our customers to make money, not us. The call came, Prime Minister's Office of India, Mr. Myra, sir, would you be free to take a call from the Prime Minister? Now I'm hanging on with a strap at the time, my wife had fortunately, some people gave her a seat. And a call came in my phone and I said, so he's said that Arundhi, I said, yes, Mr. Myra, I said, yes, sir. He said, Arun, may I call you, Arun? He's a very polite man. I said, yes, sir. He said, Arun, will you come and serve, will you serve the country, sir? Not you come and serve, will you serve the country? Considering, you know, what I started life with. I said, yes, sir. Then he said, I'm inviting you to join the Planning Commission, will you join the commission with me? I said, yes, sir. Now my wife is hearing all these yes, sir, yes, sir, and then she got worried that, I mean, who would I be saying yes, sir to? I mean, I retired as chairman of B C C, very few people I would have to say yes, sir to.
Hello and welcome to another episode of Kitabi Bate. A podcast where we make sense of India and the world through books. I have a very special person as guest today. A person who has served the Planning Commission, who served as Boston Consulting Group's India Chairman, and also as a TAS officer with the Tata Administrative Services for more than twenty-five years. A product of the prestigious St. Stephen's College, is also prolific author, having written more than a dozen books on matters of economics, policy, and lot more. Mr. Arun Myra, it's absolutely an honour to have you on Kitabi Bate.
Thank you so much, Abhishek. When you invited me, I got quite intrigued and impressed. Intrigued that you're a person who works in financial services and an analyst. And you read books written by people like me. Because I, somehow I got the impression that my books will not be of interest to people in the financial investment sectors.
Of course, I found your book to be a very, very wonderful book. I read more than ten as you've written. And of course, very intriguing, very much, lot of knowledge which, you know, I didn't get in other books. That's how I should describe your books. A lot of, you know, things are drawn from your experience and a very varied experience, a very illustrious career, I must say, with the TAS, with the Boston Consulting Group. You spent a decade in the U S as well and then you worked with the government as well for about five years before the Planning Commission, you know, was shut down and we had a Neeti Ayog. So all in all, welcome again, sir. And you wrote a lot about, you know, economics, you wrote about policymaking, about the government. But firstly, I wanted to ask a bit about you. So you studied at two very prestigious institutions in India, the Lawren School and St. Stephen's College. How you think your early years were and especially with these institutions, how they shaped you as an individual?
Thank you so much, dude. We're going back to what has made me and with whom you live and how you live early on in life. It becomes your, built into you.
Yes.
Your way of thinking. So yes, what did I learn by being in a public school? Public schools are prestigious schools. The Lawren School Sanar. At the time that I went to Sanar after the partition of India, when my family was very poor and I, they, they were living in Uttar Pradesh, where my father was able to get some work after partition. And Uttar Pradesh didn't have any good schools at all.
Right.
So fortunately, I got a scholarship, a Government of India scholarship, with which I could be sent to a public school.
Right.
And the Lawren School Sanar is, was affordable on the scholarship. So I went to the Lawren School Sanar. It was a very down-to-earth school. It had been set up in the British time for the children of junior ranks in the British Army.
Okay.
Whose parents had died and they were quite often orphaned. But in any case, their parents were not the richest officers in the British Army. So it was a very inexpensive education being provided to those people, those children. And this continued after partition, when the Government of India took over the school. It was taken over from the British Army.
Right.
By the Indian Army.
Indian Army.
So it continued with, A, the traditions of discipline and children should be brought up in a disciplined fashion in an India in which nobody had much resources. The army didn't have enough resources to spend on education. Okay, the government itself did not have. So the school had very basic infrastructure, in terms of the hard infrastructure. But in terms of, I would say, the character-building infrastructure, it was very strong. And I came with a scholarship, meaning my parents couldn't afford to give me any nice clothes to wear compared to many of the other children. Because after partition, senior officers of the Indian Army, generals and all, their children alongside me.
Right.
General Karuappu, who was the first C N C, his son was in Sanar, older than me, but he was there at the time. So of course, they could afford more.
Right.
But the school had this, that you didn't bring any of your clothes from home to school.
Okay.
You came dressed in those and they were packed up in a box and you were handed some old uniform of the army, which they had made for the different sizes of children. The British time and we continued to have them patched up and given. So you came there, you measured yourself and you were lucky if you got one with fewer patches, you know, the jacket and everything. Including the underwear was given by the school.
Interesting.
No, you could not distinguish. After you had entered the school, by the person's clothes, by looks, of course, you can't, who came from a richer elite background and who came from a lesser background.
Financial status.
So that, you know, gave me some confidence, that it's up to me.
Right.
Hmm, it's not about my background, not that my father was not well-to-do. In the other side of the boundary in Lahore. But, you know, we lost everything, so he didn't have anything for me.
Right.
So that, in terms of my appreciation, that people can come up on their own abilities, provided it's a level playing field.
Right.
It's a level playing field. I mean, nobody gets an advantage in the game because of what you had before.
Yes.
And at that young age, of course, you know, you could not have been sent to a preparatory school, which gave you, which nowadays, of course, everyone does before you go into an institution. The richer people's children have got so much more preparation and continue to have it alongside. So wealth keeps making a distinction between the abilities of people. This was not so. So as you can see, a sort of socialist philosophy, I didn't know these words and no one understood what these words were, even for a long time.
Yes.
But that's with that, a school or an institution is there to help those who have very little to get a chance to compete equally. And then thereafter, it's up to them.
Up to them, correct.
And always, it was ensured by the teachers and the prefects we had, that power was used to defend the weakest boys against the stronger ones, the bullying. And of course, the bullying wasn't based on size. And in any case, no one could bully because they had more wealth.
Yeah.
Because that I said was not visible at all. It was maybe size. But prefects and teachers ensured that whether power in the form of wealth was eliminated, power in the form of, you know, your size and muscle cannot be used against weaker people.
Wonderful.
So that was Sanar. Then you said, I went to St. Stephen's College. Now in St. Stephen's College, I did very well in school, in Sanar and Cambridge exams given to the best schools in India and I mean, just kept working, didn't realise that when my results came out, they said, but you come fifth in the country or something.
Oh, wow.
I didn't even know that. I just thought my colleagues in school are wishing me Kamal hai, perfect score.
Wonderful.
That is also wonderful. But then on top of that, so which college should you go to? St. Stephen's College was everyone wanted to in all everywhere. Because it had a reputation of, you know, producing people who went into government service at high levels and and what subject should I study there? Okay, physics honours was the most difficult subject to enter into because it was the most highly subsidised by government course, the laboratories and all the rest of it. So to get admission into physics honours through St. Stephen's College in Delhi University was the most sought-after course in the country.
Okay, right.
So I did get admitted and in my class of, through St. Stephen's, twenty came from St. Stephen's, a few from the other colleges in Dhuwera. This is a university programme. In my class from St. Stephen's, a person who came first in the All-India exam, the person who came second in the All-India exam, the person who came fifth in the All-India exam, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, they were all over the same class.
Wonderful.
In physics, even physics, not economics.
Right.
Okay, economics wasn't considered at that time to be the profession through which
Right.
you learn something useful, which can make a difference to the world. Science does, physics did. And so, so that's why I didn't learn economics formally at all in my education, not at all. And as you mentioned that I went to Tatas and my knowledge of economics or physics didn't matter there. It was something else. We should talk about that. But when I came into the Planning Commission, where in two thousand and nine, it was, the whole world was being run by economists.
Yes.
Public policies made by economists.
Correct.
And the Planning Commission was also stuffed with economists.
Of course.
And Manmohan Singh himself, as he
He was an economist, yes.
And very well-respected around the world. So when, you know, he invited me to join the Planning Commission, so I said, sir, thank you very, very much for the opportunity to serve the country, which I'd been wanting to do
Right.
since I was in school. By Mileneeti, in the sense of public service to the government, Tata was building the country. But here, I'm not an economist, he said, Arun, but that's why.
That's why he wanted you.
Yeah, he said, we've got enough of the world-class economists, including himself, maybe, are here. And but we are not producing results for the common people.
Right.
That whole socialist philosophy.
Right.
What's wrong with our ways of understanding the world, economists' ways of understanding the world and the way we are making public policy that while India's GDP is growing and yes, we can claim at that time, two thousand and nine, that we were the fastest-growing free market. We had a free market, but the signover was faster than it, which is a socialist country, interestingly.
So, so this is your journey and it ended up with the Planning Commission. Now also you are again a prolific writer, you are associated with Help Edge International as well. But after your college, you moved to Tata Administrative Services. And as you said, you, like many people at that point of time, and I must say still, the I S bug hit you. You wanted to join the civil services. And yet when you got to know that the Tatas also, you know, serve the nation and that, it was not a very popular or accepted view, that private businesses also serve the nation. Yet when you learnt from the board that, you know, in a way you are serving the nation, you joined the Tatas. How did that happen? And under, when you were in Tatas, you got a chance to work with Mr. Sumat Mulgaonkar, one of the very prominent, you know, respected figures in the Tata group. How was that journey?
Yeah, Abhishek, just looking like the profile at that time, who joined business at that time, talking of the nineteen sixties? Hardly anyone.
Yes.
And many, some did. And they were not the first divisioners. There was those who came second division, interestingly, generally. And, and there were very few opportunities also. So we had in that time in India, the businesses as you were, there were Billas and Tatas and Hindustan Lever was very discussed. My metal box had come in. And there were some old British managing agency houses. So, so A, there were small, fewer opportunities. And B, as I said, is that the people weren't ambitious to go there. They wanted to serve, compete with each other to get into the I S and I S. So India did get in those years, the best Indians into the I S. Using the criteria of how they got through the selection systems in school and then to call it, they apparently
Yes.
were the best of the best. And here they were all going. So St. Stephen's had that. All the role models in St. Stephen's, whether they went through science, like the people before me, physics, they also applied and got into the I S of I S S. So that was my ambition and certainly not to go into the private sector. But I was too young when I finished my masters, which I also had to do in physics because the rules were that you can't switch. By the time I was in, finished my B S C honours, previously the people who did physics in St. Stephen's would do B S C honours. And then read history economics for two years
Okay.
in the masters. And so they got covered five papers in the I S. But they found that people were doing this. The government found that, you know, people were switching after all this investment made to make them scientists for India's space mission and
They changed brands.
They changed to that.
Yeah.
So they said, no, you make up your mind later, but right now we are going to give you two more years of high-intensive same subjects. So I had two more years of physics. And that sort of threw me out because, say, when am I going to learn my history or economics for those three other papers beyond the mathematics and the science? But fortunately, I was too young, fortunately. So I had another year and a half before I was eligible to even sit for the civil service exam. At that time, the principal of St. Stephen's College was being approached by a large business houses, D C M in Delhi, who wanted to have a more professional management. And some managing agency houses, who would take, you know, one person in three years, provided they were good character and good family, not that they needed to have any professional skills. You know, we just would have them, sort of people we want to spend that time with. So some of these requests were coming to the principal of St. Stephen's, if you can recommend someone to us. So he gave me a range of three or four. He said, look, one in Madras with a big business house, a British business house in Madras. Another in Calcutta with another British one. Of course, D C M is here in Delhi, but you know, D C M was not like Billas and Tata.
Of course.
And Tatas also, he said. I said, okay. He said, go to all of them. You've got a year, different parts of the country, you've never seen your own country, let's give you first-class tickets, put you up somewhere. So I went to these interviews and my interviews in Calcutta and Madras convinced me that there's a reason why good people, best people who want to serve the country don't work with management companies. Those management companies, when you ask them what they did and how they produce their size and scale, was, you know, producing simple stuff, I'm saying, it's just like metal boxes or Hindustan Lever, dalda. Ghusibat ki kya baat hai, or those days, or tin me daali hai, or saari dunia ko bhej rahi hai. So dhabba wala is what the common expression we use, people in business managers are dhabba wala.
Dhabba wala.
But they were paid very well compared to the government. The government salary was one-third or half of what these people would get. So if you wanted a cushy life, you joined the private sector, but not to do any real work or serve the country. So that was the neetma, I mean, I don't want to do that. So I realised that this impression was right, except when I went to the Tata interview. So when I sat in the Tata interview, it was along with other Indians who, you know, graduated from Oxford and Cambridge, because they were previously taking mostly those people.
Right.
They hadn't still tapped into the Indian market for this sort of talent. So the principal of St. Stephen's was approached and he sent me as a possible candidate. So the, I was feeling, this is different to the interviews in Calcutta and the thing because they spent three days.
Okay.
You know, and what were they talking about and asking me about is what interested me. Not general knowledge questions like I was asked in Calcutta by this board, how many ships are there in the Indian Navy? I said, I don't know. So do you know the name of the flagship of the Indian Navy? I said, no, I don't. It so happened that the person on the board who was asking this question was a retired admiral of the Indian Navy. No, you, all of them want to show off.
Right.
And then they turned to the others and say, what does he know? He doesn't know anything about the navy.
Right.
I'm not interested in the navy.
Of course.
So why would I know if you're asking about something that, physics for example, but
Which you've studied, so of course.
Yeah, but they didn't know physics, they were not interested. So here, Tatas were asking me what I'm interested in. And they said, look, we don't want to question you on your physics and science, you've been tested by the best and you are the best. But what else do you do? So I said, well, I'm interested in art, painting. Achha, what do you paint? Kapsishurukya, yeah? Do you read anything about it? And so they started having a discussion and they knew a fair amount about it also. So it's very engaging about your inquiry and the way I think about it and explaining the way they think about it and such. And they had discussions amongst us also and observed, how we listen to each other
Right.
and give space to the other to explain their views. This they explained to us later, I said, what were you testing there? Because, you know, I again was listening mostly
Right.
and just asking others a question in the group and I was feeling I'm going to fail. Khoote pe smart hai, bolte hai and so on. But I got selected. And should I accept the job or not? I had decided at the end of it, I was going to accept the job, not because I liked the way they were giving me a chance, but because what they said to me before they closed the interviews. They called each person privately and asked this question about, you know, what is it you want to do in, in, in life? What are you planning? So they knew that I was going to sit for the physics exam. The principal of St. Stephen's had said, you know, he's one person, he's free to go and one through his ambition is very clear. Send him, send him. So I said, I want to serve the country instead of saying the government. So they smiled and said, but Myra, we Tatas always I felt that we have been serving the country. And we want to continue serving the country. Do you know the story of Tatas? Thoda padha tha before interview. And so they spent time in a very nice way, explaining what was going on in India with the British Raj when Jamsheddi Tata took the ambition to set up a steel mill in Jamshedhpur, when he took the ambition to create hydropower projects in Bombay and the first textile mill in the heart of India to use cotton, in the cotton-growing areas. And he wanted Indians to build industry
Yes.
and India to be industrially strong. That's service for the country, right? I said, that's very true. Now, I also like these people, the salary is also higher than the government. I didn't expect it because other people I said had better backgrounds.
Right.
But they offered me the job.
That's how you thought that, you know, what you want to do, you can do that with the Tata group also. And so you spent, again, you spent twenty-five years also with the Tata group before you moved to the U S. So, so I had a couple of questions. One is that you of course had a wonderful experience, you were in the tutelage of Nanadha, then Mr. Sumat Mulgaonkar, who was a very respected figure of Tata Motors, Telco as it was known then. What, what was your learning there? I think at before the age of thirty, you were heading an entire plant because the manager there had some health issues. You also went to Malaysia, a country which you didn't know anything about, but yet you worked there and ensured that, you know, the programme succeeds. So you had many wonderful experiences there. So how was those experiences? And as you said about Tatas, why you think and how, why and how the Tatas were different from other businesses? Because as we say, when we talk of business, we talk of, think of profits, greed, you know, those kind of things. But Tatas are a very respected business group. When we talk of Tatas, we talk of ethics, values. How you think that is the case with Tatas and not with other business groups?
I'll take the question, you asked two questions, sir. One is, Sumant Mulgaonkar, what I learnt from the greatness of that man? And the second is ethics and Tatas and what makes them different. So I'll just take the first one by two examples.
Right.
As I said, I had done my physics and science and I was learning management on the job. Because in those days when I graduated from St. Stephen's College, right, there were no I M's. The first I M, Andhavath had just started opening up, opened up. Calcutta followed soon after. So it was not again, something that people were really interested in because we weren't interested in management and business. Plus, there were hardly any people going in there, so no seats available either. So I, and Tatas didn't, they said so, that we don't want to test you on your ability to manage because you've never done it.
Right.
And management is something, the real management, you can only learn on the job because it is something that requires you to understand each specific situation and especially the people in the situation because they are the energy with whom you will build and grow, which is what Tatas have always done. So in fact, if you knew formal management, it might be handicapped anyway. Yes, that's it. You learn the right management. So here, I get into Tatas and I'm sitting in the Tata Steel office with the G R D Tata, who is the chairman of the whole group and chairman of both Tata Steel as well as Tata Telco. And so to, and there I'm reading and, you know, it's all papers coming from the other directors and then you see them and read them and you give it to the chairman with your comments and notes through your hierarchy. So what, doing anything accurately yourself? So Sumant Mulgaonkar was made by G R D, also chairman, vice-chairman of Tata Steel. Steel was already vice-chairman of Telco because Tata Steel needed revival to go back to the spirit of build, build something, which they had at the foundation. That spirit was there, but there was no opportunity for the steel people because the industrial policy said, any further expansions of the steel industry will be done by the public sector. Which is, Tatas itself had recommended along with Billas, that, you know, these capital-intensive industries, India will not be able to build on scale, because we don't have the capital on scale. So to build the commanding heights of the Indian economy or the foundations of the Indian economy, things like railways and steel, basic chemicals, fertilisers, this would all be and power should be in the government sector. You can get the capital to build these capital-intensive industries. So the people of Tata Steel were feeling stuck.
Right.
They were the best managers in the steel industry in India, but they didn't have the opportunity to do more, do more. So Sumant Mulgaonkar was made, because you know, you know how to excite people that with what little you have, you can do something remarkable. That was his genius. So G R D Tata said, Sumant, you've got to ginger up this organisation. Meanwhile, of course, Telco he was building
Yes.
in this century, the last century, what Jamsheddi Tata had done before? Build an industry built by Indians and prove to the world that we can be as good as you.
Yes, but it's
Telco turned out that way, the trucks, buses. Now, Sumant Mulgaonkar, when he got the second job in addition, he needed personal help.
Right.
So he told G R D Tata, I'm taking the job, but you give this guy to me.
Okay.
Why me? Because he had also observed that in the meetings with G R D, occasionally would call me and Sumant Mulgaonkar, that I was just listening. And, you know, my eyes went up at the right time and Sumant Mulgaonkar apparently was noticing because he asked me sometimes afterwards, hey, you were there, what did you think? So he promptly said, I want this guy and but he said to me, he said, I'm going to make you do some real work. There you're sitting in the office with G R D, it's very prestigious. Parantu, it's just papers and stuff. So I'm going to be travelling around with real people, you know, listening to them in the steel company as well as in Telco. And you're going to come and, you know, listen with me. And since he is doing the managing and the reacting, you, I would ask you afterwards, what you have learnt? What an amazing opportunity to learn.
Right.
So I would go and after a meeting, he would sit down and say, come here, come here. So what do you think was going on? Why do you think the managing director of Tata Steel is holding on to his point of view? And what, what do you think of his idea of the technology and so on? I just was picking it all up. Then came building this plant in Pune with the expansion of Tata Motors, Tata Telco. We had Jamshedhpur, we had produced, were producing trucks to world standards with the Daimler Benz Star.
Oh, I M was Tata's idea.
So ninety-eight, ninety-five percent India-made parts made by other suppliers that beat It's a ninety-eight, ninety-five percent India made parts made by other suppliers that beat helped. To nurture by buying from them in large volumes and they grew all over the country. So the Tata truck was an India made truck, except that, Daimler Benz, when it. Took Tata made trucks from Jamshipur to export to Malaysia. Sri Lanka, Bagheera, would put the Mercedes star in front. Now, why were they taking Tata made truck? Because they were cheaper to export.
Export, right.
Nearby markets, plus our costs were.
Low.
Not that high, rather than sending trucks from Germany all the way there. So Sumant Mongalka said, look, we've learned how to make a truck, make a truck. To the world's best German standards and what the heck, why should the world not know that they are our trucks?
Our trucks.
We want to put the Tata symbol when we export them like we were doing in India.
Right.
Daimler Benz said, no. No, you had this agreement. That's only for the Indian market that we're going to teach you how to make a truck. So Sumant Mulgaonkar terminated the technology agreement with Daimler Benz prematurely.
Okay.
However, Daimler Benz were the majority shareholders. They owned more shares of Telco than Tatas did.
Okay.
So they had the option to sell or not. They didn't want to. They continued to buy. We had, you know, rights issues. They continued because the company here was making. Good money.
Right.
So they didn't want to lose their shares, though they had lost the possibility of getting royalties from us. Plus, they were seeing a competitor grow in international markets. So I was learning all this, but how did they get there? How did the people of? India learn how to make trucks in such a short time to the world standards in Jamshipur?
Jamshipur.
These are new people, raw people. I T Is, I I Ts. There were no IMs as I said, but they had the engineers and the skilled talent. Hmm, raw talent, but they had to be nurtured also how to actually build something.
Correct.
So our whole development program, which is where my contribution comes. Because Sumant Mongalka, when the plans were laid out for the Pune factory, all the chappies who were the senior guys of uh, Telco at the time. Had been technical people. Divisional managers and all, trained by Daimler Benz. They had been great engineers and, and stuff. So they knew how to do the technical part of the plant and the truck. So all their plans were concentrating on the technical aspects, the machinery, what type size, layouts of plants. You would keep coming and he said, no, no, we haven't got a good plan. We haven't got a good plan. So you're missing something. So they would say, yes, I wonder what the chairman is thinking we're missing. So they go back and talk. Again, from their angles of technical thing, maybe. You know, he was suggesting that uh, the layout of the machines is wrong, it's.
They were thinking solely from the technical perspective, right?
They present their plans from that perspective.
Right.
So any criticism that your plan is not working means something from their perspective is not working.
No, okay.
So third meeting such when he ended up also saying, it's very good, you have made an improvement, but it's missing something. So they asked him, so sir. Like a Guruji Zen master, Chan master. You know, you're asking this question and we don't know the answer. You give us the answer. What is it we're missing? He said, gentlemen, they're all men. Where are the human beings in this plant? I mean, a plant doesn't work just because it's got machines and other things.
People.
The people make it work.
Right.
Where are the human beings? And where are these human beings going to come from? No one in India has ever made, you know, from scratch. Uh, the whole plant with the trucks and you need, but you need thousands of people.
Right.
Are you going to bring them from Jamshipur? No, you can't. They're Bihar. Have you paid there? You know, to find them around here in the west, which is why the government asked us, he says, to put the plant on the western side of India. So we'll create employment.
Yeah.
Uh, around Pune and Pune then was not like Pune now.
No, no.
And all the development of industry was on this side of the Ghats and Tani. And they wanted the, and it's still going on Maharashtra. If you go deeper in Maharashtra and Marathwada, it's still so.
Yes.
Poor and that's why they keep demanding reservations.
Right.
So that time, Pune was poor compared to the other side. So they gave the land around there, Yah Karo, there'll be employment here, skill development over here. And so, so we have to pick up people from around this part of the world and they don't know. How is this going to happen? I had fox then. So he said, um, you know, unless we get the, a plan for the human development.
Right.
That we need, um, this is not going to work, your plan.
Right.
And since none of you seem to even think that that's important. I'm going to give it to this chap here. And I was in my twenties and. So I was shocked and they were all bit relieved. So they had a meeting over again as usual. He sat down, he said, so, I said, sir, I know nothing about it. He said, Myra, honestly, I also know nothing about it.
About it. Yeah, great.
So you're younger.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you find out how and you know, you can always take my support. You go to something. Radically different, which is technology people don't understand.
Right.
You know, I'm here to understand and fun with you. I'll learn with you. I mean. I said, gosh, he called that factory in Pune. He told everyone, he would tell all the managers, it's not just to make trucks. We are here to build an Indian industry, one. Number two, so you're building an industry, not a truck. Number two, it has to be a learning.
A manufacturing.
And who learns? The machines are not going to learn. Your big fancy building which you are putting up are not going to learn. It's the people who come. And by doing the work, if you create that atmosphere and give them the facility to learn on the job. We will be able to then realize our aspirations and our ambitions. So this is what he caught me into. So that made a lot of difference in my life. I began to understand. The process of industrialization is not about incentives to investors and giving them the land and all rest. You know, which is what we tend to do now.
We tend to.
Invite people, kitna kar gayi, I'll get you a big, like Mr. Moody did for Mr. Tata.
Right. Subsidize.
In Bengal, I'll get you a big piece of land.
Gujarat, yeah.
It didn't work, huh? Um, so Sumant Mongalka understood it. It's not about the land, it's not about the capital. It's about the human system, the human system in the place. So it went well, the whole thing. Uh, meanwhile, we had started exporting our trucks to Malaysia. And Malaysia had a similar policy to India that we want Malaysia-produced trucks to be sold.
Right.
Produced by Malaysians. Uh, they've already Daimler Benz produced and. Uh, Volvo produced and General Motors Bedford produced trucks and so on. Hum bhi Bhoomiputra karna chahte hain.
Right.
So they in a destitute part of Malaysia on the western side with all jungles in Kahal. There, we want someone to put up a factory and Tata said, well. We got an ambition to, to go and we've been selling trucks in Malaysia. Now we'll be stopped from selling them unless we also produce in Malaysia. We'll do that. So we did set up uh, with the, the, the local Bhoomiputra, the king's brother. If he had access to all the powers that be to manage the, if you will, the political side of the enterprise. And we were to provide just the technology, just like Daimler Benz had done with.
Did for Tatas, you.
Yeah, let you know.
Malaysia, right.
They said, you understand India, India respects you, you take care of all of that. We'll just provide the technology and train your people in technology. So that was our role. Within two, two and a half years, uh, the bankers uh, in Malaysia. They said, we are calling back our loan because we see no evidence of the possibility of these people producing. Uh, trucks that would actually sell in competition with the others and therefore producing a profit. And so they said, we're going to call back the loan unless the investors. You know, they now put in more money for tidying over the next two or three year, as usual, you know, from the financial business. Now, Tatas was not allowed, like Indian companies couldn't give capital abroad. We weren't allowed to send money abroad.
Right.
In the nineteen seventies.
A lot of restrictions regarding the foreign exchange.
Yes, yes. So our initial equity was through equipment that we had made in India.
Okay.
And we had given us, it was the capital, so it was, you know, converted into this value. So that converted into our equity and we're the minority shareholders and these Malaysians. Was the larger, they'd actually brought finance from these banks and long-term capital and their own money and so on. But now the bankers, they didn't understand, they were Australian based bank. Didn't understand uh, these sort of things that governments don't allow. And their uh, uh, investors to actually send money. So they came to Tatas and said, uh, you know, we're going to declare this bankrupt unless you investors. You know, cover by money from your side, put more equity into it. So Mr. Palchivala, who was on the board of my company, Telco, he had to explain to them that legally it's not possible.
Right.
It cannot do it.
Right.
So they said, well, and they were playing. Understanding our pride, Tata's pride and India's pride that hum bhi karke dekha sakte. They said, we're very sorry, we're going to have to declare bankrupt. It'll be a slap on your face in the world. An Indian, the first Indian joint venture abroad has collapsed. These Indians don't know anything.
Right.
Uh, so now this Sumant Mongalka struck him. He said, no, this is can't be allowed. However, legally, we can't send money. Also, in the agreement with the Malaysians. It was that, like India had done, that you know, in a certain period, only for a certain period. Can you have foreigners, you know, sent for managing.
Managing, right.
And it has to after that be uh, local people. You have to train local people to do it. So in this case, the managing director by the Bhoomiputra law had to be a Malaysian. And the whole board had to be Malaysian, Bhoomiputras or Chinese. Except the representative of the machine technology providing. Same model that we'd had with Daimler Benz.
Daimler.
We just replicated it.
Right.
So here we were that the managing director and his team, top team, were all Malaysians.
Malaysians.
We had some technology people uh, to be general manager of just the assembly plant, for example, or the service part. All the management really, finance. Shelling, marketing was in the hands of those people and they didn't know how to do it.
Right.
So Nani Palchivala wrote a letter to, which was signed by Mulgaonkar, which Mulgaonkar asked him to write, just two paragraphs. That, you know, we are dismayed that your first Bhoomiputra venture is in trouble. And we are dismayed that our first foreign venture is in trouble.
Right.
Hmm, we by our laws. Cannot, and for good reason, the government will not allow finance to go. What we can, what our diagnosis is, that the problem is management. So if you will give us permission to provide you the managing director of the company, just that one position. For three years.
Hmm.
We'll turn around the company.
Okay.
Yes. The Australian banker went promptly to Deutsche Bank in Germany. Okay, I've got this guarantee from Tatas, but there's no money mentioned in it. And you know, you've had a long relationship with them and you know, Daimler Benz continued to invest and so on. What is this? So the man asked and told to me by the Australian who went there. He went to that and the German older man had of the thing. He said, you got a letter from Tatas? Show it to me. And there's two paragraph letters signed by Sumant Mulgaonkar. So he said, this letter is worth much more than any banker's guarantee.
Guarantee.
Oh, mine was shocked. Now also, the bank didn't want to write off the loan because they'll have to show it in their books.
Yeah.
He also wanted a way out. So they cooperated with us to persuade the Malaysian government to please allow. An Indian to manage this company. So once again, this. Permission has come from the Malaysian government. You can send someone from India to.
Right.
So Mr. Mongalka calls this meeting of all the senior. People from our marketing, our finance, we have problems of marketing and finance, plus our production people, they didn't have a problem. I want a seasoned man, he says, who got the ambition to do something in a difficult circumstances and. Save our reputation and build the reputation of India, which one of you is going to go or find your number two to go? All of them said, sir, can't spare, can't spare, can't spare. So I'm sitting there, come for some other purpose to the meeting, to ask him to sign off on some, on unique labor agreement we had in Pune. And so I was sitting there waiting for this meeting to be over so that he can sign up on this thing.
Right.
So then he dismissed them all and he said, yes, I know you're waiting for that. Don't worry, I'll sign that after you explain it to me. We'll do tonight only, so don't be anxious. Meanwhile, you're going to Malaysia. I said, why me? He said, you saw that. None of these guys have got the guts. Don't go and go there. They are happy. They got the top positions and Telco is growing and they'll keep remaining the top of the industry. Waha jaake, you'll have to prove your real metal.
Right.
You go.
And, and what was your age at that point of time?
I was, uh, that's went in nineteen seventy-seven, so I would have been thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Yeah, so this was again six, seven years after the race challenge.
Right.
I said, hmm. Some vague ideas where's Malaysia? And he said, I was living in the Taj Jolvi. He said, you call, he knew my wife, uh, by her name is, uh. You call Shama tonight and say that you're going to Malaysia. We have two very small children, you know, four, five years old and seven or something. And don't worry, we'll make sure that, you know, they all put well and, and you live together there. So I called my wife, Shama, I said, Shama, we are going to Kuala Lumpur. She said. Kuala Lumpur? Isn't that? It sounds like that. So I said, it's in Malaysia. She said, no. I've got small children. I'm not going to go and live in Malaysia. It sounds like a jungle, right?
Of course.
I said, look, I'm going to study it very quickly and I'm told it's very developed it was. And we had a good that way. The way we could live in Malaysia, we couldn't have lived in India in terms of the facilities, roads, cars. It was far ahead of India, though of course very backward in terms of uh, management capabilities. So I was given these, um, the, the governments said not three, we'll give just two and then observe. Within two years, um, the thing company turned around. It became the largest seller of trucks and buses in Malaysia. At a price higher than the Japanese that had come in, less than Daimler Benz of course. As well as instead of profitability coming in three years' time at the. Where the bankers had said, you know, we have to see signs of it in three years, the first profits.
Right.
They came in two years.
Two years.
How? Because when I came there, the board said to me that, you know, because we had got the. Managing director fired, who was a close buddy of the chairman. Bhoomiputra educated in England or whatever, hmm, fired.
Right.
They wanted the rest of the management fired, including there were two technical Indians and there were some Chinese men who did the marketing. They wanted them fired. He said, the problem is those guys. It wasn't to do with us. So you are now saying, when are you going to fire these people and put in place a new team?
New team.
Well, I said, look, finding a new team for a company that is not doing well.
Right.
Only in Malaysia, it's going to be impossible.
Right.
I better figure out what really these people's strengths are. So I spent the first four, five weeks, a couple of months. I said, I'm not going to fire. And the board said, well, up to you. You're going to then, you know, fail. You're telling me this advice. I said, I will do. That's my decision.
I am the. To what to do with, right.
I choose my team. That you know, they want to interfere with. That's one thing very clear. Okay. So I've traveled around with the sales manager and through the backwaters of Malaysia and slept in. Little one-room hotels and ate quail's eggs for breakfast and little towns with nothing. And there were, there were Chinese people who bought trucks, drove trucks, tough light. And so this chappy was trying to get our board impressed with the idea. That selling trucks is not the same thing as other things that you think in business where you play golf. They told me also, we want you to become a member of the Royal Selling Road Golf Club. So I said, why should I waste the company's money on this very expensive thing? They said, no, that's where deals are made, you know, that's where selling is done.
On golf course, so.
I said, maybe, but can I postpone that decision, please? I want to see whether it's going to be useful.
Right.
Money. But I realized that as this. Sales manager, very seasoned Chinese guy, said, he said, that's been the problem. They don't understand how actually the selling of trucks is done and you advise them. So I lived with these Chinese guys. They liked me a lot, the Chinese distributors. It's our first chappy or managing director who's actually. Drinking, you know, brandy with them at night and they were doing a drinking and I was celebrating also.
Right.
And you know, we can be like him and he, he's taking trouble to learn. So we changed the complete model of the distributorship, the service and everything. And that's what the main change was. The same trucks, the same technology that before was not selling. We just changed the whole positioning of our truck.
Right.
In the market, the marketing channels, the guarantees at service to tell the users of the trucks. That we are here to help you make money. You, our truck is the most robust. It's more robust than all the Japanese and less robust or equally robust as the Daimler Benz and. Two-thirds the price. Why waste your money? You're practical guys. It's sold and the word of mouth amongst them, yes. This truck doesn't break down. The minute breaks down, the parts are immediately and cheaply available.
Right.
So I learnt then, as I said, that's people who make the difference because you know. The Chinese guy, the two Indian who are being asked to send home, they became so loyal. Saved their reputation also. And a point I made to them, that they'd been quarreling amongst themselves, saying, no, the service fault, sales fault, this fault. I said, we're going to sink and swim together. Reputation of all of us, whether you're a Bhoomiputra finance manager, you are a Chinese. Marketing and sales manager, you're two Indian service and production managers. If this company doesn't turn around faster than people expected. All your reputations as great managers are gone. So you better stop quarreling.
Right.
And my goodness, the teamwork of those people were just amazing. They were supporting. They were supporting each other in different innovations in their spheres.
That's why we saw it turn around in much lesser time.
Much less time, much less time.
So so coming back to the second question, and this is one of the major achievements of you as well as a professional within test. How? How and why you think that Tata's are different as we discussed? Tata's are linked with values and ethics. Other organizations and that's a worldwide phenomenon, we link them with greed, profit-making. What what's different with Tata's?
First, I'm going to give you from Malaysia itself, what illustrated for me that Tata's are seen as different to other business people from around the world. And then I come to back here in India, why Manon Singh therefore asked me to join the the planning commission, though not an economist. In Malaysia, as I said, we had to establish uh sales distribution.
Yes.
At a time when no one wanted to be a Tata distributor hmm. Why? Because things don't sell, others selling and a distributor wants to know something which is easy.
Is easily sold, right.
And they're selling. Um and people were not buying for a reason that they are trucks because they didn't believe that. It was a good economic proposition. No, a truck is not a car. In a car, you also get status and stuff, whether it's the most economical or not, doesn't matter. A truck is a utility.
Right.
It's it's your tool of business, you know, you uh or even a bus. You know, people pay to use it and they're going to pay what they can afford to pay and you, that thing better be economical to run and durable also. So you don't have to spend too much on replacing or or maintaining it. So this proposition that what we are selling is something to help small people make money.
Right.
The person who was buying our trucks, I mean possibly, were not a big fleet owners because they would buy Demlo Benz and get deals or to buy one hundred, you get something or chappie, you couldn't afford to even get that, buy one truck, two truck, one bus, uh these sort of people. So we said, okay, we have to help them to make money. We have to help them to make money hmm. And this, back in India, I learned from Sumans Malgaukar. He would say that uh you know, any new design or something we made, he said, what does the Sadarji think of it? All the truck users after partitioned, as you know, not all, so many were Sardars because they do something and they'll be traveling as you know, Sardars in Chennai and everything and that's how these tough Punjabis, there's nothing else to do maybe and they were mechanically oriented also. Uh so our large clientele, which also then built our reputation, was the Sardar truck driver and Sardar local distributors in Punjab particularly, but Sardar truck drivers. So any change we made, Suman Malgaukar would say, you know, you got your technical evaluation and your views. What does the Sardarji think of things? And he would actually, that's the beautiful part.
Yeah.
You would actually want to hear from a Sardar who may not be speaking English. So you know, you'd have someone like with him. And he and they would get down because the Sardar mechanic, I mean truck driver, he had the practical thing.
Yes.
He below would show it, this screw and that, and soon Mulakka had some agility. So he would, you know, sort of be helped down and he'd sit with the guy underneath it, see, point out to our engineers, see, he's got the point here, it's not your fancy stuff. So this feedback from the actual users, the people you think are not technically qualified, but they know their business.
Know they was, right.
So we had changed, my basic model change was this, that who are the buyers, what is the value proposition that they need? And so we are going to concentrate on the service side.
Service.
Of it and in our marketing, we never advertised the truck. Because we got a local Malaysian advertising agency and we said, look. I mean, we're a very small account, we can't afford. And this is, they again creatively said, all right, we're going to do something very unique. We are going to, you pay for the front pages of the papers there and it'll be side. And they will never mention the truck. It will say, one picture will be an oil can.
Okay.
How many drops of oil are required to lubricate your truck, some statistic given of truck A, which is the Tata truck, it's, you know, one-third the oil consumption. Fuel consumption, just a picture of a thing in a gas station. Tires, springs, so like that, seven ads hmm. Now this struck people as, this is right.
Yeah.
This is it. And then they will want evidence. So the first few buyers of Tata trucks, who were buses were there, they began to say, yes, actually it's true. And then distributors found, you know, these guys understand and this is so. So I'm talking, the biggest state in Malaysia, the time for the markets was Perak, which is north of Kuala Lumpur.
Yeah.
All Chinese dominated, richest state hmm, but Chinese dominated hmm. Um run by the communists because they have, you know, they had a communist party, the Kostan Collection, that state had a DAP, the communists ran it.
Okay.
So I was invited to the start of our appointment of our dealer.
Okay.
A big dinner given Chinese style and the local member of parliament, the Chinese guy, he was the chief guest.
Okay.
Though I was told speeches will have to be made. And um both drinking, Samne Ki Brandy, Yum Singh, Yum Singh. You know, you may have to stache stomach it, but keep pretending that you're drinking a hell of a lot. So then um the, I was asked to make the first speech and dealer welcomed everybody and after, you know, one hour of drinking. So I was asked to make a speech. So I just talked to the Tata philosophy. I said, always, whether we made salt in chemicals, what does the common man need and give it to them as economically as possible, textiles, we made the more basic textiles, but nothing fancy. Because common people do that.
Right.
Trucks and buses are needed for common people's transportation and use. So our philosophy is to understand and give what the common man.
Common man.
And the tagline that came out of me, we want our customers to make money, not us.
Us.
Hmm. After me, this Chinese Communist Party DDP, older man. He spoke in such a fiery way and went on and I could see my dealers getting happier and happier. Happier and some people around the Chinese uh person getting bit worried. So when he finally said, you know, and they all said Yum Singh and Studdart and I also said that dealers on both sides of me were delighted, almost crying with joy. So I said, what happened? They said, we are made. So what did he say? He said that, you know, all these rich companies, they want to make money for themselves. They care about their brand and their profits. Here is a company, yes, that cares about your profits, about your business. If anybody in my state does not buy a Tata truck and buys another truck, his legs will be broken. So he said, you people, do you understand who's good for you? This sort of company is good for you, though it's a private company. This sort of company is good for you. So this, I say that Tata's had this ethic of what is good for the people, what is good for the country.
Right.
We were a socialist business organization. Unlike a capitalist business organization, as Billas were classified at that time.
Yeah.
Because they were moneyed people and investors and they counted every day. That was their reason for being in business. And yes, they were in similar businesses as us, they also tried to make trucks and buses and they collapsed. They were, like I said, they got into chemicals and other things like we did too. But in every business in which Billas and Tata's competed, Tata's grew and the Billas did not. And because we chose these basic businesses, plus Tata's got into high-tech.
Yeah.
And that investor doesn't want to risk. But this is what Tata's did, in school of science or we were the people who, as you say, Institute of Science in Bangalore, which I'm sure these things. So while, yes, we were serving the common people and we were making uh some profits, but it was the Tata Trusts who got the profits. And Tata Trusts invested those profits in, I'm saying, social and nation-building activities.
Yeah, right.
So this is the model you see.
Right.
So this, the structure itself and the ambition of Tata's made Tata's different. The structure of the Tata Trusts as being the uh short-calling shareholders.
Yes.
Even if they weren't the the biggest shareholders. And the owners of the Tata brand, which was very valuable for any company that started in any field to have a that we are Tata's.
Right.
Because foreign investors also trust them.
Right.
So that's why Tata's were conglomerate, in which many of their companies, very variety of fields were doing that. Because they were Tata companies, doing well in India and they can do well abroad.
Abroad as well, definitely. So yeah, that's definitely, I guess, explained it very well, the reason uh why the Tata, it's, I think, I would say that DNAs is different and that's why the Tata's are different. And even in this age, you know, if we, again, if you ask a common man, when they talk of Tata, they think of values, whereas the same person, they think of a corporate organization as someone associated with greed or profits and all, but yes, Tata's are definitely different as we learned. So coming to your latest book on Indian economy, wherein you talked about, you know, you raise a concern about going inequalities. So Indian economy currently is the fastest growing economy, it's growing at a very good pace, although some say it's still less than, you know, its its potential. But so at one point of time, we are seeing that the economy is not growing at the pace which it should be growing despite the six, seven percent growth that we are talking about. On one hand, we are talking about issues such as, you know, uh the government not being able to introduce reforms such as a labor laws, flexible labor laws. The agriculture reforms. And on the other hand, we are seeing that whatever the government is doing, even that is not sufficient because the benefits are not being percolated down to the masses. The rich is becoming richer, the poor is moving poorer. So I see a kind of dilemma here. On one hand, some, there are some people who want to be cap, more capitalist. And there are people who talk about, you know, moving back to the socialism thing. So what you think is the problem with the economy and how we can, you know, resolve it?
See, the two questions, you asked really two questions, not just one.
Right.
One is um why is GDP not growing enough? And the second implied question is, uh how much growth of GDP would be enough for what? For lifting the
The poor.
Those of the people at the bottom.
Right.
Hmm. So I'm going to take the second question because this is what Manon Singh put to me. I came back to India like I mentioned, um when he invited me to join the planning commission and came back from a holiday.
Yeah.
Which turned out to be a three-day holiday instead of a month's holiday because
Okay.
He invited me out of the blue when I just retired from PCG and my wife and I said, you know, we should see the world together, sixty-five years, it's enough for working.
You were vacationing Europe that time?
I went, we went to Prague, she and I, and I, we just landed in Prague that night before and the next morning I get a call from Montek Aluwalia, who was, had been in college with us. Uh when, we had met occasionally since then, I mean afterwards. So he just called and out of the blue and I was, I mean, happy to hear an old friend call me. Where are you? I said, I happen to be in Prague with Shama. He said, oh, I see you uh um um could you be able to speak to the Prime Minister of India? I said, me? What for? He said, look, he intends to invite you to join the planning commission. I said, wow, uh so. Um so um I I said, hmm, you know, I have to think about it. Because I'd just promised my wife that I'm not going to take up
Right.
Another full-time job. So I told him and he knows that, my family that bit. Um so I said, I better ask her. She said, of course, you should ask her, but you know, please do quickly because, I mean, he has to announce the composition of the planning commission by the end of the day. Um so I said, okay, I will. So it's that the time when uh within the hour, at the end of the hour, I couldn't reach a hotel. We were out shopping, my wife and I. And when I told her this, she said, well, you better be in a hotel, a calm room. The Prime Minister's talking to you, can't be sitting over here. So we were going in the bus tram. He, we couldn't find a taxi, we got into a tram, it takes a little slower and
Yeah.
We're all flanking down the hills in Prague. Um and before we could reach the hotel and the call came, Prime Minister's Office of India. Uh Mr. Myra, sir, would you be free to take a call from the Prime Minister? And the way I'm hanging on in the, with a strap in the tram, my wife had, fortunately, some people gave her a seat. Uh and the call came in my phone and I said, so he's said that Arunji. I said, yes, Mr. Myra, I said, yes, sir. He said, Arun, may I call you Arun? He's a very polite man. I said, yes, sir.
Hmm.
He said, Arun, will you come and serve, will you serve the country? Sir, not you come and serve, will you serve the country? Considering, you know, what I started life with, I said, yes, sir. Then he said, I'm inviting you to join the planning commission, will you join the commission with me? I said, yes, sir. Now my wife is hearing all these yes, sirs, yes, sirs, and then she got worried. That who would I be saying yes, sir to? I mean, I retired as chair of ABC, very few people I would have to say yes, sir to. So she said, you already agreed to join the planning commission? You had to ask me first. I've agreed to him and now you don't agree. Anyway, so I said, we better go back home. So I asked him then, so that that's, I said earlier that, uh so I'm not an economist, you might have made a mistake. And he said, like, which I said, mentioned to you earlier in the interview, that that's why I want you. So now then he puts the question, he said, you know, we are the fastest growing.
Economy in the world, yes.
Economic economy and so, but the people of the country are not benefiting, inclusion in economy is very low.
Low.
Yet. So the question seems to be, as a good economy said, is the pattern of our growth not right? It's not the amount of the growth, is the pattern.
Pattern and distribution.
Right. And you are a systems thinker, this is what your consulting is about. You are an advisor to how to transform a system and that's probably what we need. We need to have the planning commission reform its thinking of how development is brought about. Economics of development, it needs to adopt a new way of thinking.
Right.
Because you keep following the present way, Arun. We can have a few more points of GDP growth. But if they're not producing enough growth at the bottom, incomes at the bottom, you're not getting inclusion. And he said, you know, economists know how to get more growth. They don't know yet how to get more inclusion along with growth. And though he didn't say it at the time, this is what socialism is.
Right.
It gets growth inside and at the bottom of the economy and thereby, because of it, the top line and the whole grows, which is socialist and Chinese philosophy.
Right.
This, um I also was reading generally, but this became then a debate, as you know, uh in those years. Between Panagraya and uh Jibjish Bhagwati, who believe in free trade.
Yes.
And all this, India was wrong before nineteen ninety-one, it was being protectionist, building Indian industries, what's the use? You can buy the best stuff from other companies, other countries, yeah, and the Indian citizens will be very happy. Because yes, it's true that before nineteen ninety-one, the types of cars available were very few.
Very few, right.
Other than the Maruti, which was a government project by the public sector, producing very good inexpensive cars. Drew the market for cars in India and people who otherwise couldn't afford a car got cars. There's a proof again, it doesn't have to be a private.
Right.
To get uh you know, growth, which serves the people. It's a Tata idea, right?
Right.
Produce things for the masses and then expensive and you will grow. So Maruti, the other two are private companies, Premias and Friets and the Inustan Motors and Billas. And yes, they weren't serving the people very well hmm. And phones, we had, you know, only public sector and you could not get a phone in time.
For many years.
Many years. So all these stories were being told that if you uh allow foreign people to sell to you and come and, you know, set up their assembly plants here, uh Indian citizens will benefit. Of course they would. And so there was popular support
Yes.
For those liberal market reforms, because the consumers were getting satisfied. But this was nineteen ninety-one onwards, in two thousand and nine, it was evident that incomes at the bottom, employment, good employment at the bottom wasn't increasing well.
Right.
Okay. Now, reforms, you're talking labor reforms. Already, we had been diluting the labor reforms by making it ease of doing business, that you could hire contract labor.
Right.
Though there was a Contract Labor Regulation Act, no one is really complying with it. The Contract Labor Regulation Act, there said that only a few activities.
Right.
Yeah, which are not uh part of the core business production, can be given on contract, running your canteen maybe.
Yeah.
Few things like this. Any activity which is regular and part of the organization's work has to be done by your own employees. But we'd found ways of doing even production work
Right.
To contract workers.
Right.
It was growing and growing and growing hmm. And so why? Because business people would say, investors would say, you know, your labor laws come in the way, your unions are too tough. They keep demanding fair wages and you can't fire people so easily, which is in the interest of the workers. So the communist labor unions. So the communist labor unions have always remained true to that.
Yes.
And of course, depending on the government in power, the Congress Union, the Intak, start towing the government line. And if the BJP earlier was in power, then its union, the. Uh. You know, because you can't contest. So the. Needs of workers, uh and the challenges of workers were not getting into the policy stream.
Right.
Because the business people are saying unions are a hindrance.
Uh huh.
If you want it easy, then you know, make it easier for us to not have a union. Or whenever there's a dispute between the workers and us, then you know, you must decide in the favor of ease of doing business. So ease of doing business was the philosophy and yes, we had introduced it. He said, yes, we have to do it now because we don't know what else. Hmm? So while we are doing all this, please start introducing, let's introduce other ideas and changing our policies. So the phrase that I, when I introduced the metaphor and wrote a book about it called redesigning the aeroplane while you're flying.
Yes.
Because you have to keep using the present policies and the present institutions.
Right.
Otherwise you'll collapse.
Collapse.
But they must change their philosophies, they must change uh the way they. Do their work and policymaking, therefore, I'm saying, which is the planning commission's job, required us.
Hmm.
To consult the people, are our progress, is the GDP benefiting you? And people then were saying, and now also continue to say. And this is what you see Manmohan Singh and Sonia Gandhi particularly had brought to the fore, that the growth of GDP. Which started with the Congress and the liberalization and which then the Congress, the BJP had then made into the shining.
In the shining campaign, yeah.
And uh you know, Jashwan Sina and others and, you know, they went even further with.
Yeah.
Regulations, as you say, uh in various things. Uh and divestment, they in fact had a divestment minister, Arun Shori, that divest, you know, this is all.
Yes.
Okay? And she picked it up, that actually the people are, on the ground are suffering and they are not. Got a voice in all this. So she appealed to those votes and she got it and she won it for the Congress Party League.
In two thousand and four.
That, yes.
Yeah.
And so, so Manmohan Singh had come on that, you see, he was appointed Prime Minister by Sonia Gandhi with the political mandate. That uh the uh the U P R government had in the first time, which the communists were, as you know.
Yes.
Uh coalition partners and they had to be, we needed their vote and support, otherwise we sang the country for running. Um I mean, I wasn't Congress, so I can't say we there to it. Uh the policymakers needed their support.
Right.
Um so that's why Manmohan Singh asked the question. That we cannot be carrying on just growing the top line and getting, you know, Western economists and Western trained economists. He said so, he said, most of our economists, Montek included, uh I worked with IMF, I worked with the World Bank. That's the ideas that IMF, we had to take the IMF's advice in ninety-one because along with the loan, they said unless you do the reforms. The IMF austerity way, which has continued all over the world, wherever they give IMF loan, cut down your government budgets, balance.
It's like always aid with strings, there are the strings.
Austerity.
Right.
Austerity, austerity. Greece suffered so much and during the Asian crisis, other countries suffered and so. So he's a very wise, calm, system thinker himself. He said, you know, this. The IMF reforms and the thinking that, of that sort of thinking, is what has caused the problem. But we think more of that is the solution.
Yeah, very true. So but we are seeing, as you said, you joined in two thousand and nine and then Dr. Manmohan Singh raised these issues. Yet we see now in twenty twenty-five, which is again coming to, heading towards twenty-six, and we say, especially after the post-COVID world. That inequalities have risen further. So if, if I ask you, what are the say top two or three things a government. Needs to do to tackle this problem of growing inequalities?
Very obviously, the one thing is to grow uh incomes at the bottom.
Yeah.
And we're talking of money income, so it means that people need to have work which produces enough money for them, whether they're doing. Their own little farms and doing farm, they're doing work and that work should produce a higher income for the farmer. If it's a worker, hmm, right?
Yep.
He's doing work all the day and all his working hours and he must get a higher wage for it, okay? Uh also, um people who we say are being employed now in delivering blankets in ten minutes and twelve minutes. Uh think about it, A, they paid very little.
Yeah.
B, they have very little job and social security.
Right.
They are fired if, you know, two days in a row, he's two minutes late.
Yes.
And too many of his deliveries, then you know, he's fired. He's got no job income security.
Right.
And beyond that, to be able to afford uh food is, of course, the primary thing you need and a shelter is not so easy. If there's a crisis in the family of his health, anybody's health, to be able to get. Adequate medical health, keep himself at work or to take care of a family member, uh it's very expensive.
Right.
And be made. The health services are also private.
Private, yeah.
So he has to pay money there.
Money there.
Hmm? It's not like you went into, say, a government hospital previously, a civil hospital and. You won't charge anything. I mean, if you're rich, maybe five rupees, some token, varia, but nothing. It's, health, public health is the public sector, like in China, hmm, or Vietnam, which has also grown very well by the way. Uh inclusion, as well as like I'm saying in education, it's even more dangerous.
Yes.
If you privatize education, the US, which is a highly capitalist country, the one sector which they're finding it hard to. Covertize is their school education.
School education, right.
Hmm? Cannot do. So these are basic human development requirements.
Right.
My mind and education, my skills that go with it, and my health. And as Amartya Sen and Jaan Dres were pointing out at the time, and I want to come to that debate because why is it that we haven't changed?
Right.
Though we call Planning Commission NITI Aayog. In terms of the pattern of growth, nothing much has changed.
Right.
Okay? Because Amartya Sen pointed out that you first develop your human capital.
Yes.
And then it will attract more financial capital. And together then, both the financial capital will grow, which you keep investing in the human capital and you get a healthy growing system. So the primary thing is your human capital.
Capital.
So if in India, we are giving more uh admiration to financial capital.
Hmm?
In all, when you provide incentives to people, it's for financial capital to come into the country. And the financial investors are saying ease of doing business and therefore, please ease your labor laws.
Yeah.
What we're doing, have been doing, is destroying our base, human capital.
Right.
Though we've been getting these large investments. And so now when Nirmala Sitaraman points out that we made things easy for you, you investors. And yet you're not investing. What are they saying? One is they're saying the market hasn't grown enough. I mean, if you invest something, it better be bought.
Yeah.
But who are the masses who are going to buy?
Hmm.
Oh, no. The masses don't buy your luxury goods from which you made your cosmetics funds and so on. So I find it vulgar. Like Manmohan Singh also said, that our big venture capitalists and all the rest of it. Look at the examples of things with which they made their money in the stock market. It's more and more luxury goods.
Luxury goods.
Who is producing the basic stuff? And learning how to use more Indian people to produce it because they, unless they earn, they're not going to be able to buy even what you produce. So you have to see it as a system also, that your company is part of a larger system and itself is a system of human beings. And if they don't feel respected, if they don't earn enough.
Yeah.
If their needs when they're in trouble are not taken care of, yeah, you are destroying your own base.
Own base.
And the national base, which is the human source. So come back to the Tata philosophy, exactly was this. Sunil Mughal has said, the human beings is us.
Us.
And unless we nurture and build our human beings inside our factory and around us, our suppliers. Our dreams of being an industrial country.
Will never be met.
And so the second thing that we must do right is build Indian industries.
Hmm.
Okay? They need not be owned by Indians, but they have to be run and the workers and everybody must be Indian. Plus. The intellectual capital that they produce, because the human minds produce it, must be owned in India by Indians.
Right.
We've got into, you know, technology, nineteen nineties, end of it, Infosys and T C S. Indian coders.
Yeah.
Came out of I I Ts. I I Ts were there to produce people for the manufacturing industry, manufacturing managers.
Yes.
All of them found a cushier job, yeah? Higher salaries maybe, and you don't have to go sweating around on the shop floor, walking around, working with nasty workers. You sit in an air-conditioned office, we're given a computer.
Correct.
Some nice.
Move to the more glamorous jobs.
Mathematical things to do, get fun, earn good money, white collar, they provide you there, nice air-conditioned place.
Yeah.
Nice canteen, every week, there's a party there in Kekbissika, birthday, vah vah, chocolate cake. I mean, this became that, that why not?
Why not?
And also it was building the country, Indian nighty was being recognized and so.
True.
And thereafter, we began to think, you mentioned Raghu Ram Rajan, uh others, our economists, that, you know, we don't. Need to be going through the whole trouble of first building manufacturing industries, after agriculture, and then getting into services. We can leapfrog. India has indeed leapfrogged. But see, the service industries, we were growing. One was these high-tech, high-end ones. They employ very few people and they keep taking the best engineers and. Uh the best uh PhD-trained people into them. The other services are blankets and scooter and delivery wala's. Yeah, they're creating employment, but how much income and how much opportunity and they're not getting this. So these other companies were contributing. Now they are stuck. Why? Because we encourage then GE, the GCCs, the Global Capability Centers. These global capability centers are subsidiaries of the parent corporation. Any intellectual property produced here belongs not to us, it goes back to the parent company.
Right.
Business models have changed so much in the last twenty, thirty years. In that if you control the intellectual property, you can get your work done anywhere.
Correct.
And still you'll make more profits. Apple has grown because of that.
Absolutely.
Do hardly any production of apple, even the designs also not necessarily produced anymore in their places. But they own the intellectual.
Intellectual capital.
And so in the global supply chain, it's not a matter of where the work is done and how much is being paid, which we need more wages paid for that work. We want to please own that intellectual capital, that is where sustainable profits will be made.
Right.
And that also gives you control on. How you'll produce and what you'll produce and where you produce. So at the moment, we're at the end of global supply chain and this is our fear now with America. That on the leather stuff and all the farm stuff, which is some basic stuff, they've. I don't want to use men like word, they got us, you know, by the vulnerable parts.
Yeah.
Yeah? But they say we want to export that stuff from America there to you, which will hurt our farmers and our dairy producers.
Right.
Yeah? We'd hurt them. On the other side, the Indians who have gone to work and done very well, Microsoft. Google, they are serving whose interests? They're required to serve the interest of their shareholders.
Shareholders, right.
And what are they doing? They may be big Indians. They're enabling those shareholders to control the intellectual property more and more.
Correct.
So in WTO, in the nineteen nineties, uh which was introduced in nineteen nineties, WTO. They move from, you know, you can't own other country's land.
Uh huh.
It's wrong to own other country's labor as slavery, but you can own intellectual property. So colonization of industries is now run by owning. What goes on in the minds of people, the intellectual part.
Very true.
हर हमारी ज़मीन, फिर हमारा जिस्म, अब हमारा दिमाग भी.
That's why we often say data is the new oil, because if you own that and you can, you know, you are practically owning everything and everyone is after data. That's also one of the, you know, characteristics of owning this intellectual property and all. So yeah, very, very well said point. So. Uh two questions, one is related to what you mentioned as.
But let me just conclude.
Yeah, please.
You asked, your question was that, has anything changed?
Yeah.
And I said, but if you look at then, we converted Planning Commission into NITI Aayog. Fine, name is different. The charter is a very good charter, by the way. It addressed many of the issues that were the problem in the Planning Commission. It's worth reading. What is different in the charter of the NITI Aayog compared to what the Planning Commission was doing? It's the right things. However, the ideas running the development are vice chairmans of the NITI Aayog. They're the same sort of economists.
Right.
That were running the Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
Right?
So unless until data will change.
I say it's putting old wine into a new bottle.
So right. So just two questions. One is you talked about and you will write in the book, listening to others, people who are not like us. Now, I think in these times, it assumes a lot of importance because we see people, everyone is another. If you do not agree with someone on what should be the leader of the country, which party should one vote for, what are views on various people, the way?
Yeah. Sorry.
What are your views about people whom someone particular religion, caste and all? And people literally fighting about petty issues. And listening to others, I think, become more important than anything else, especially in these times. What's your take on it and listening? For well-being, as you mentioned in the book.
You know, uh as I was asked to um think about what the Planning Commission is doing wrong.
Yeah.
And um uh what was the Planning Commission? It was, you know, using data, like you said, statistics and modules. Uh for everything, the health also you measure by, uh the weight of babies and how it's growing. Uh so just think about when you said, you know, owning the data, but what data? The question is, do you have the right data for. Uh solving the problem that you have to really solve.
Right.
So it's all data, it's, to my mind, it's all junkum.
Uh huh.
Yeah, I have a lot of data, but is it the right data?
Right, of course.
Have a right model for understanding this data also. So, so coming to the Planning Commission, yes, the point was, yes, we had. Manulubis built up the Planning Commission, he was a great statistician. So it came in this, that you must have, and it's correct. You must have the right data, but it's not data, you must have the right information.
Information, correct.
And data is not information. Information is what do I really need to know?
Right.
And in knowing some things, you may not be able to convert it into a, something you can measure in data.
Right.
You may not.
Correct.
You have to understand it as it is and it, you can't measure the size of it, yeah? But you understand the whole system, ah, this is it. Flower, I tell you, is it F L O W E R? Hmm? How do you measure the beauty of a flower? How do you measure the value of a flower?
Value of a flower, right.
Yeah? So there's something here to be said about creating things which are got real value, qualitative value. And would have some quantities also to there.
Right.
But please don't use data, the data is quantities.
Quantities, right.
So the Planning Commission was using data a lot and unfortunately, we've become even more data dependent.
Uh huh.
And we believe, like you do, that if we have better data management.
Right.
We'll be able to have more development.
Yes.
This is one thing that has got unfortunately too advanced.
Hmm.
With this uh NITI Aayog and so on, this belief that uh we are not doing good planning and the development is not happening well because. We are not using data now. So all digitizing, digitizing everything. Okay? It's good in the delivery, it can make it efficient, but digitizing doesn't help you to understand anything.
Correct.
Properly. So I say that I came to the Planning Commission and I said, well, the people are not being. Satisfied, they feel they're not being understood. Now, if you have to listen to common people for whose sake the plan is done. You have to listen to them. Sometimes their accent also in Hindi is Bhujkuri or whatever, their languages. And the way they think about things is different to yours. So when they express it in their way, would we educate people? See, they aren't educated enough. If they knew economics. Hmm? Then they'd understand how to be done. The problem is just that, actually, we don't understand reality, which they do.
Right.
And if we could just listen to them and learn economics from them, rather than trying to make them economists like us.
Right.
We have a better chance of success. So listening to people to understand their views, their solutions. Is the missing thing and that continues, if I might say, and getting worse.
Getting worse.
So now instead of listening because that's messy.
Right.
Let's data and digitize it, have more data and look at the whole situation through data and run it with data only.
Right.
Okay? Not get people to cooperate with you.
Absolutely.
Eliminate the people, let the data system run the thing. So. Pointing out to you what must change. Listening, I'm saying this case it is experts, so-called, must listen to the non-experts in their minds.
Right.
They really know the situation.
Right.
You know a bit of many things, I mean, a lot about one thing. The person who understands, um let me say. Education through data, he knows how the education system.
Right.
Should function. The person who knows health through data, for the health system should function. The person who knows incomes and livelihoods in that aspect, knows that, environment to that, but all these are. But all these are integrated together in the life of that person. So vo kayega, you know, you're spending all this money on, say, the educational and skilling side, but I feel that you are not doing enough to manage the water system around here, yeah? And without that, you know, lives are becoming harder and harder. So please, in my place, instead of, you know, investing all in a fancier school, please start just by helping us to have something else at the moment. Yeah, and next we'll come to that. And education is a bad example because fundamentally everywhere. But in education, again, similarly, if you start analyzing why the quality of your education is poor, they'll tell you that there are not enough classrooms. So they say build classrooms.
It's easy to do.
But it's not the classrooms, it's the manner of teaching and learning that we fixed. So, ah, therefore teachers, we don't have enough teachers. What are the teachers learning? Is how to teach the old way. And this is very much true in the medical system. We are putting up more medical colleges.
Colleges.
Because we feel we need more specialist doctors. Actually, we need generalists.
Very true.
So, listen to the people, number two, and number two is systems thinking. This specialization has destroyed the world. The European Enlightenment, remember? That's how modern science and higher education got founded. Again, people who got, as you said, a bachelor's level, master's level, PhD level in something.
Right.
And they know they're the world's expert in this much, knowing a lot of it. Experts know a lot about very little, but generalist knows very little about a lot.
About a lot.
But he understands how the things come together in this space. Do this. So we must change the way we plan to make it a system reform. And Manmohan Singh summarized for us after we had been told, please reform the Planning Commission, said, listen to.
Listen to.
People, listen to industrialists, listen to other government people, what difficulties they have in, you know, in living the lives of people. So listen to many diverse people and then, you know, tell me what is the reform we're going to make. So we reported back the Planning Commission to him after seven, eight months of this intensive listening, which included lot of listening to common people, to NGOs, through their association, not just listening to the experts and the planning people and the business lobbies only. We did listen to them, but we balanced it out with an overweight.
Grassroots level.
Grassroots level to come back. So when we summarized for, I mean, we didn't summarize, we told Manmohan Singh, yes, in the summary, this is what people say. All the lobbies, business lobbies and the others is missing. And so, so he summarized it very well. He said, ah, so what we have to do is to make the Planning Commission into a systems reform commission. Not a maker of plans and budgets, but an essay, a force in persuasion. Means you have to persuade the people that what you are doing is good for them and they must believe it and they will cooperate with you in your reforms.
Reforms.
We are not doing this.
Right.
And so this listening, one clearly is to the real situation through systems thinking. Other is a specialist better listen to each other.
Each other. Instead of being inside.
Yeah, created a specialist ministry for skilling. And I kept saying the wrong thing to do. The Ministry of Industry is responsible for skilling, right? Ministry of Agriculture has to be responsible for skilling. Why make a separate ministry for just skilling? What is it they are going to do which can be done without involving?
Right.
The industry or the agriculture.
Absolutely.
They say, no, but those people don't give it the highest priority in their work. Therefore we're separating. So we'll count the number of skilled people in this country, can count. And what happened? We started investing in skilling programs, as you know, and industry also felt relieved.
They will do right.
And the skilling and counting the number of skilled people. Then we've been finding the last few years, that the higher the skill levels you have, the less of the chances of you're getting a job. Not just in India, there are more people, master's degrees is a percentage unemployed than unskilled people.
Unskilled.
I just reading, in the US also, the economists, you'll see this, pointing out in the US also, if you have a higher education, the chances that you are not employed and remain out of employment have become much longer. People who are unskilled, the chances that they're getting a job and stay at work are becoming higher. So it's again the structure of the economy and our belief that to be specialized in something at a very high level is what the world needs.
Right.
I don't think the world needs more specialists.
Specialists. Maybe more journalists.
Yeah, understand the system.
Absolutely. I think these were very critical insights, especially as you said, we don't need more specialists and we need more journalists and listening. Why it is important and we share a lot of your, you know, your personal experience within listening did help a lot. And we end the podcast with the hope that, you know, people do actually listen and we hope that the world becomes a better place and India becomes a better place. Mr. Mara, thank you so.
It's not a better place, a better place for everyone.
Better place for everyone.
Everyone, a better place, you can say the GDP is higher to the place.
No, of course, it should probably down to the masses, of course, a better place for everyone. That's the optimism we end our podcast with. Mr. Mara, thank you so much, it was a pleasure talking to you and wish you all the best for upcoming books and wish you a very healthy life.
Thank you, Arushik, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.